This is the Foolish Optimist Podcast. I am your host, Amy McDonald. If you're new here, we are on the hunt for the next generation of progressive leaders in the United States. If you haven't yet, please subscribe wherever you're listening. And if you're feeling gratuitous, you can also rate and review it. It's a huge help for us. But now I get the pleasure of introducing our guest today. Jaquan Fulmore is running in Fayetteville, North Carolina for City Council District Seven. He's a traveling chef, an educator, and the founder of the nonprofit Everybody Eats. I love that name. Jaquan, thank you so much for being here.
Appreciate you for having me.
Are you running for City Council in 2025?
Essentially, I grew up in the gaps in the system, and I've worked very closely with the gaps in the system. And I left Fayetteville. I grew up here in Fayetteville. I left when I was seventeen because I just didn't see any long-term benefits of being here. And coming back after nine years and seeing that the city has grown so much. But it's outgrowing people who have been here for generations. Those gaps have never been filled. They're not closing at all. The gap between the community needs and the resources available are just way too wide of a margin. So. I started my nonprofit, Everybody Eats, so we raise awareness on food injustice and food insecurity. And just through that journey itself, I've run into a bunch of different nonprofit and grassroots organizations who also lack in funding and resources for doing life-changing work on a huge budget. And so running for City Council is essentially the next step in being able to platform those organizations and, you know, some of these necessities that we need within a city that just aren't being met.
You're my third city council candidate running in North Carolina. And as a North Carolinian myself, that's where I was, I was raised. I think it's really great. And I think what you're doing with Everybody Eats is really great as well. So maybe we can talk a little bit more about those gaps in the system. Because I think a lot of cities are feeling this, and a lot of natives and people who were born and raised there feel like they're getting priced out and feel like, you know, the growth is good, but we kind of have to find a way to make it more equitable across the board. So maybe we can talk more on those gaps.
Absolutely. So one of the biggest things that we run into is specifically speaking on where I'm at. Run into is the fact that there are resources that are being looked for, and then those who are told where to find them. And then when you go and seek them out, they actually don't exist. So there are a lot of rental assistance programs. There is a lot of food pantries and things of that sort that are around the city that are listed around the city. But then when you try to go and obtain those resources yourself, you run into several different reasons on why you cannot, whether that be there's no funding for it. There's a pantry here that markets itself very well, but it's never open. And then there's just, people go to bed hungry every night. People go to bed every night. And we were in the process of building a shelter for our unhoused residents throughout the city. And then the goal was for 150 beds, I believe. And then it was turned, it turned out that they were only going to build it for 50 beds because after doing the market research, they realized, they determined that we don't have 150 unhoused people who would benefit from a shelter containing those, that many beds, which is just untrue.
Right. Well, it's also like, how are you counting unhoused people? Who's chronically unhoused? Where are the kids? Like, things like that, you know? And who is it serving? Is it serving families? Is it?
Right. This doesn't, there's a lot of, for lack of better words, hoopla. And we've had our Salvation Army shelter closed down twice now. After just lack of funding, lack of support, and lack of resources. And another grassroots organization that helps single moms find housing, or they, what's the word called? Crowdfund essentially for them. Help with assistance and find them shelters and give them clothing and things of that sort. They just announced that they're going to be closed. Their last day being open is going to be on Christmas, because the people who gave them their space to be able to have their organization is turning it into an office space. And it's just wild how like these things keep happening over and over and over within the city. And a lot of people do have a big problem that the city of Fayetteville uses itself as a marketing city for itself. But the that already live here don't feel any benefits of being a resident of Fayetteville. We keep building apartments. We keep building neighborhoods. We keep bringing businesses here. The businesses don't last. Nobody's able to afford to live in the homes. And it's just like, we're not actually addressing the residents that are here struggling right now. It seems like they're planning for people who don't even live here yet to come along in the future.
Well, and it's, it's funny that you say that, right? Because they're planning for the future in terms of apartments, but you know, this homeless shelter that you just mentioned, they're not planning for the future. It's like very antithetical to this broad idea of what's happening. Fayetteville's like, I Googled it earlier. I don't know if it's right, but about 200,000 people.
Around 200,000 people.
Yeah. I mean, so it's a sizable town. It's not a small, you know, it's not a little, little, small place. Realistically, I think people forget how much power local government has. And I want to talk about some of your issues that you had mentioned. I really, really liked creating a pipeline for jobs with livable wages. Could you expand on that a little bit? I think that's a, I think livable wage is really important, and people don't really understand this topic.
Absolutely. So yeah, to get started on it, it's just expanding more on something like, what does livable wage actually mean? I understand fully that I'm not one of the older candidates running. But I, I worked my first job 12 years ago. I was 16. Minimum wage was $7.25.
Yes.
Minimum wage is $7.25. One of my friends in high school, they were renting an apartment, two bedroom, two bathroom for $575 a month. The same apartment right now is $1,200 a month.
So land.
Doesn't change, but the, the price of, the cost of living is just increasing astronomically. So for Cumberland County, a livable wage would be around $18 to $20 an hour. And that would just be a baseline standard. So the bare minimum of what it would cost for you to be able to not be paycheck to paycheck would be between $18 and $20 an hour.
Right.
But the minimum wage again, 725. So one of the.
725 pre-tax. I like to remind people of that because it's really probably six or 550 after. It's crazy.
And so a lot of, a lot of businesses around here, you'll see that they don't pay minimum wage, but they'll say, we'll start you at $10 an hour. But then it's like, what is that? Like, it still doesn't do anything for.
Right.
Of living here in Fayetteville. And even in some of the more underrepresented parts of the city as well, like your bare, your apartment is going to start at $1,000 a month.
It's still a grand. Yeah, exactly. People are like, well, you just find a cheaper place. No, you can't. There's a bottom, there's a floor to how cheap things get.
Absolutely. And then another huge problem within Fayetteville is the the conflicts with our utility company, PWC. So PWC, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on how they do their pricing or anything. It just don't feel right.
We're in New York, and they've, our, our utilities company has admitted to price gouging us, and still nothing has happened. So.
People are seeing 30% increases on their utility bills.
Yeah.
No change of utilizing utility. And it's unfortunate even more so that we have a PFAS situation here in Fayetteville. So we have soil toxicity. We have water toxicity from the chemical plant, Kimwars dumped their, their chemical byproduct into the Cape Fear River. And so.
Great.
Yeah. PWC was able to afford a filtration system for that. And then our current administration did a federal freeze on grants. So they made an announcement saying that our utility bill is going to go up to be able to make up for the loss of that grant and that funding for the PFAS filtration system. We really can't, we can only argue that we're not getting paid enough to be able to compensate that. But then it's like, you wanna, do you wanna, do you want your bill to go up by $3 or do you want toxic water? And so.
Right, right. You're like, no, we want our kids to be able to drink water. And we would like to, you know, as humans, it's kind of one of those things that's required. So.
Right. So it just, it sucks all the way around. But so some of the ideas that myself and my team have come up with are, number one, you have to build relationships with employers. Your, everybody's here, when you talk to a business or a corporation or anything like that, they don't really understand the, the human interaction and how the cost of living is affected. They deal in profit and loss.
It's numbers. It's all numbers, and everyone is a number. And it's, that's part of this mentality shift we have to make.
100%. So if you have employers and businesses and things like that, that are disconnected from the people and have no relationship with the city, number one, it creates a, that's not my problem mentality, like you were saying, like, are we making money or are we losing money? That's what we're worried about. But if you incentivize those businesses, and Fayetteville is no stranger to new businesses, we have new businesses come in like night and day. And they, like night and day, they're in and around. So if you offer workforce grants or fast track permits to employers to commit to hiring locals at above or at the living wage instead of a new business coming in and then bringing outside employers to come work or having them transfer with them, like incentivize them to hire people who already live within the city. Also incentivizing businesses to utilize already standing structures here in Fayetteville. Because again, like, there will be construction, the building will get built, they'll be here for a year, and then the turnover is ridiculous. And utilize those buildings that are already standing. It'll really help, number one, with us not paying these construction companies to build new businesses. It's confusing to a lot of people where it's like, so many businesses keep coming here, but nobody's getting jobs. And so you have to create the relationship with these new businesses within the city and give them a reason to want to hire people already within the city because people keep leaving.
Well, and that, that idea of aligning incentives, I would love to double click into that for a minute because this is how a lot of these companies, you know, especially these mega companies, they come to these towns and they've done it in New York, they've done it in Charlotte where I grew up, they've done it in and around DC where I lived prior to New York. And they say, it's gonna be 60,000 jobs. It's gonna be 30,000 jobs. This is why we want this deal with this city. And then, like you said, they bring in outside workers and you're like, well, that's not 60,000 jobs. That's 60,000 less apartments that we're now all competing for. So maybe we could talk a little bit more about aligning those incentives with the, with the businesses and how, how that works. Because I don't know, in my mind, because you're a chef, because you started a nonprofit, your creative brain probably turns a lot faster than some of these like lifelong politicians. So I don't know. Do you have any ideas around that?
A lot of the, a lot of our politicians here as well, and this is just the streets talking, you know, like, with how much commercial real estate some of our politicians have. So it, it kind of gives an unfair bias to the amount of businesses or specific businesses that come in where they're able to set up. Because at the end of the day, it does benefit some of our local politicians' pockets, but doesn't benefit the people who are living here. We have a fairly nice downtown area. I'm, I'm, nobody argues against that. Downtown Fayetteville has been on the come up for a really long time, the Haymount area.
He's cute. Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
But then there are other parts of Fayetteville that just remain untouched. And then some people really question, like, why is the area where our mayor is from so underserved, so underutilized? But the biggest building in that neighborhood is the funeral home owned by who? The mayor. And so it's like one of those things where we're just all like confused, like, why are we not putting any funding or income? And then it's like, well, people don't know how to treat nice things when it comes to these areas. We're also not addressing the root causes on the people living in these areas. So that's the issue. You can't just start dropping stuff in areas because people are going to think, well, now what's that going to do to my way of life or my cost of living?
Am I even going to be able to stay here?
Exactly. And we've been here for generations and generations, which comes into that statement I made earlier with a lot of people feeling like the city is just outgrowing them. And then they're being behind, or their homes are being stacked on top of and built on top of within their neighborhoods. We just had a city hall meeting last week, and the biggest topic of it was they're building a, was the proposal to rezone for a 7-Eleven to be built in this residential neighborhood.
And I saw the news about this. Yeah, I was gonna ask you.
So many people came from that neighborhood to city hall, like there were signs and say no to the 7-Eleven. And people were just like, like begging, you know, like, don't do this, don't do this here.
Right.
When it was given time to speak, there were three people who wanted to speak for the 7-Eleven, and there were six people who signed up to speak against. Two of the people decided to give their speaking time away to one person, you know, one guy in a suit.
Interesting.
So instead of utilizing their five minutes of talking, he was able to utilize 15 minutes just to himself. Of course, he's one of the guys that are in charge of bringing this development forward and making this.
Right. And then he's making money off of it.
100%. And it was one of the, one of the big, one of the reasons he gave as to why this is super beneficial and super necessary for the community is that 7-Eleven provides a healthier option for food. And like, when the crowd just like.
A healthier option to what?
The crowd erupted, like.
I love, I love me a 7-Eleven taquito, but I don't know if that's real.
It, 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 the crowd erupted, and they had to bring, you know, back calm to the, to the city hall. Because everybody was just like, what are you talking about? And at the end of the day, the vote went to deny the rezoning was a three to six in favor, or I'm sorry, six to three in favor of denying the rezoning. So it didn't get denied, and then it was approved to move forward. And so one big thing that we all noticed and we were speaking about was one of our city council members decided to leave before the.
That's one of those things that I think I, like, you would see steam come out of my ears. I mean, straight up, I would be like, I'm gonna flip a table.
Right. One of them.
Job. This is your job. You have to be here.
Literally. And when it came to voting, her vote ended up counting as a, as an agreement. It was like a, what do they call it? No, we don't know if she was for it or not because she left. But her vote counted for the rezoning. And everybody was like, that's not fair. Like, how is that something that you guys are?
Right.
Who, like, everybody was questioning. And again, they had to bring order back to the, to the city hall. But like, people are, that's a valid feeling. That's a valid emotion. And, and really, like, one of those things where it's like, I have to take personal is that it was my district's representative that got up and.
Yeah. Yeah. I, again, I'm just losing my shit straight up.
Were. People were. And there's already just this feeling that they don't care about, you know, well, number one, if you don't live in the district, you don't care about that district. That's a narrative that has to be changed. Because I would like to think, I would like to be optimistic and think that people on our city council who live in different districts also do care about the districts they don't live in. But the objective is that they just don't. If it doesn't effectively affect you, you really don't pay any mind or pay any attention to it. And so.
That's actually very indicative of like American politics as a whole right now, right? It's like, oh, if it's not affecting me, should I care? It's like, absolutely you should, because it does affect you. You're just pretending it doesn't, right? Like, this type of rezoning sets a precedent for other types of rezoning that will happen all over the city, and it's going to change so many lives.
So that was also a huge point that was saying, like, what's stopping them from aggressively just coming underfunded and, and neighborhoods without political representation and people who don't fight for, for these types of things. It's like, what's stopping other companies from just coming in and setting up where they want, when they want? And so even if you don't care, I mean, leaving in general, like disappear.
That's, that's disgusting. That, I'm like, that's a spit in the face. That's truly really frustrating.
None of us know if something happened or something, you know, maybe had an emergency, but like, you can still, our city council members, they be talking. Like, they'll, they'll put something into the mic and they'll talk to the audience and they dicker.
Exactly. You know, they could, she could say, hey, I have to leave. My child needs to be picked up, whatever, you know?
But that wasn't it. Like, we, we handled whatever the, was on the agenda before that. There was like a small minor break. When we all came back, it was only eight instead of nine. And so nobody said, hey, for this, her vote is going to count against this. No, we only knew her vote was going to count in favor of the rezoning once they started their voting. And then everybody, you know, it, yeah. So the hearing was a formality. And the decision was already made. And so my whole thing is shoot straight. You know, if you guys knew you were gonna do this rezoning and build this 7-Eleven, don't make us come to the last month's city hall meeting and then push it to this month's city hall meeting and have people planning like, okay, how can we form protests? How can we do a silent protest? How can we come to city hall and gather numbers and all this other stuff when it wasn't going to matter? You know, like.
Either way, yeah.
Yeah. So, and we have 10 people this year running for mayor in Fayetteville, and.
When's the election? Remind me.
Our election is October 7th, for the first one, and then November.
Like fourth or fifth or whatever day. Yeah, whatever Tuesday.
Right. And so we have three people on our city council running for mayor.
Okay.
That was like a whole, a whole thing. Our mayor initially wasn't going to rerun. So he's been mayor for eight years. He wasn't going to run again. And so everybody took that as their opportunity to run for mayor. And so nine other people ended up, well, it was more than that, but some of them rescinded. But nine other people decided to file to run for mayor. And then on the last day, I filed at 11:45 AM. The deadline was noon. He came and filed at 11:58. And so.
Okay, drama. Wow.
The whole, this whole year is just drama.
Political theater in Fayetteville. Watch out.
Don't even know that. Like, it's been crazy. So there was 20, 28 of us in total for candidates this year for districts and throughout the mayoral, mayoral race. But three, three people dropped. One of them was because of a hearing that he had to have for not being truthful on his filing application. And it's just been a whole thing. But we're not happy as a, as a, as constituents within the city. And people just want a clear slate. They want to just start anew because it doesn't seem like there's a connection between our city council members and their constituents in general.
Again, another sentence you just said that's very indicative of American politics. So many people feel disconnected from their leaders who are supposed to work for them, right? But it's a lot of the same stuff playing out on the national stage as is playing out in Fayetteville. It's people lining their own pockets and things like that. Do you have any ideas around how to close some of those loopholes at the city level? So that city council members can't do this?
Yeah. So one of my whole reasons for running is due to lack of transparency. We, 70% of people don't know who their city council member is for their district. Even more, I don't know who the districts around them are represented by. I truly do feel like you should be able to go to Walmart and bump into your city council member because they're just people who are a part of your neighborhood. Then they experience what you experience. They see what you see. Sometimes you run into city council members that are so egregiously disconnected and, and, and have so much going on outside of their role as a council member representative that you don't see their face, or you don't hear from them, or even know that they exist until it's an election season. And so.
And they're like, give us money.
Right. Money. Signs pop up little by little.
Yeah.
Oh, I wonder who that person is. But it's like, there's no trust. Like, we can't trust you if we don't know you and we don't see you. And every time we care about you, it's because there's a new development going, or my neighborhood is going to be affected by XYZ. So that lack of trust and that lack of transparency also then in turn makes you unable to be held accountable. So it's like, how can I hold you accountable if I don't know the type of moves that you're making? I don't know the type of person that you. This could fall perfectly in line with what you said you were going to do when you were running and got elected. But I don't know that. And then I don't, I don't have the option to say, hold on, you promised us that this was going to get better in this way because we don't see you. You disappear after you get to your chair, and it's okay. And our city hall meetings, or our city, our city council meetings being held and then the opportunity to speak, not being at every city council meeting is also a problem. I do think, and this is something that me and my team kind of pitched when we were in our last meeting, having district roundtables would be really cool. So just like setting up a roundtable where you, you have your constituents come and you guys hang out and talk. And it's not just to complain, like, for sure, if you have, while you're complaining. But let's talk about where things are going wrong, things that you want to see improved, also things that are going well within your district. And as a, as a representative, I can take your feedback and then meet with my, my colleagues as well. And they can have their district roundtables. And then we all kind of know what's going on and what to think about before we even have these city hall meetings and things of that sort. Because people feel like they're waiting for an opportunity to speak to their representative at these city council meetings when it's like, they should be accessible all the time. And shoot me an email just doesn't cut it. When I moved back to Fayetteville, I shot emails all the time. And some of my, once my, once the nonprofits started picking up some traction, and then I was doing like interviews.
Knew your name a little bit.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a little disheartening because then it's like, oh.
Very much so, very much so. It didn't benefit me in the long run because I did have some things to say about how I felt like organizations were treated within the city. But name recognition started being there. I would go to these business mixers and panels, and I would meet some of our representatives and be like, hey, we should talk sometime. And I'd be like, I'm, I'm in your inbox right now. Like, like.
Right, right. You're already ignoring me, actually.
Truly. And so they're not acceptable. The email thing doesn't work all the time. We have 10 people sitting up there. And when I wanted to talk about bringing this community garden into development and how we can talk about fighting food insecurity and injustice and things like that, I had one council member reach back out to me, who's not in my district, mind you. But he reached out to me, had me come to his office for a meeting. We sat and talked for maybe two hours. And like, from that moment on, like, we built a relationship to where it's like, I can trust and depend on this guy. I wish he was my council member, you know? He's, he's helped me. My first canvassing was last week. He was, he was canvassing out with me. And it's like,
Hell, yeah.
He doesn't have to do that. Like, he's running for mayor. He's got his own campaign to worry about, but he came out and he's like, I, I feel like what you're doing is a good thing. And wherever we can support, we want to support, things of that sort. But then there are other council members where it's like, now, right now, today, I could walk up to them, shake their hand, and they would have no idea who I am. And it's like.
You're like, no, but I've also emailed you 18 times over the last six months.
I don't know what else I can do, you know? Like, I've emailed you. I, you know my name because of articles. And it's like, we need to, I was called unleashed or uncontrolled at one point in my tenure here.
Wait, why? Tell me why. I mean, I need the tea.
Yeah, no. So I, when I was looking for a site for the community garden.
And that's for Everybody Eats, right?
So I was looking for a site for, for the garden, and I would talk to, you know, just whoever, economic development. I would go to some of the other gardens around the town and things of that sort. Just, I would try to contact properties that are just land for sale, things, whoever. And so I would talk to, I would talk to some of our people in charge, like our economic development and things like that, and say, hey, this is what I want to do. Specifically, I would like to create a community garden that isn't just utilized for plants. I would like for it to be an outdoor classroom to teach about sustainability. Of course, we love to teach horticulture and agriculture and things of that sort. But like, we have a workshop coming up in October, and so there's going to be volunteers there teaching financial literacy, adaptive fitness, Reiki and sound.
Hell, yeah.
That. And it's like, this is a space that I feel like would be super necessary in Fayetteville in general. And a lot of the feedback I got was we have gardens here in Fayetteville. And it's like, okay, fair. Let me go check out some of the gardens here in Fayetteville. Number one, pay to play is a bad term.
But let's say, they're not community gardens.
They're not. So buy a plot and then tend to whatever you want to grow there. But when this, with them, some people have bought their plot, maybe they started plants, and then they never came back to touch it again. So now it's overgrown. It's unt.
Completely dead and like ruining your plot next to it.
Last year, there was a mushroom spores problem, and it's just like.
Oh, God.
You do. And so it's like, people can't just come here and just hang out and stuff like that because it's not theirs. Like, that's not their plot. So I'm, I did an interview with one of our magazines here, City View, and I basically said, like, there's no real addressing food insecurity in this city. If we want to have solutions and designated points of, all right, like, we can give you a box of produce. But most people are just going to boil out the nutrients. all right, like, we can give you a box of produce, but most people are just gonna boil out the nutrients from a box that has broccoli in it or something like that, like not, they don't know what to do with that box of produce. There's mission other than here you go. And so sometimes you don't even get that because like, again, we're running out of resources to.
Well, and you get the like little thing on the side, you know, it's just, this is what you do. And you're like, oh, great.
Right. And it's one of those things. And so, uh, obviously the reporter, she has to fact check things and all this other stuff. And so she spoke to somebody in charge and so from their perspective or their point of view, they said, it's just not a specific priority at the moment, but they, we do.
To feed people? Feeding people is not? Just wanted to confirm.
We have programs and SNAP programs in Fayetteville and, uh, that's like, that's what our focus is at the, at the current moment when it comes to addressing food insecurity. However, if the minimum wage is seven twenty-five and let's say I, let's say I work a job for thirteen dollars an hour and I work forty hours a week, you know, and then whatever my paycheck ends up being, if I'm right over the threshold for what my SNAP benefits could.
Right.
It's like, I, I can't afford to buy groceries, but then you're saying I make too much money to receive assistance to get groceries. And it just doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And it's not fair. Like, you guys are, we're, we're talking a lot of technicalities here. Like technically, yes, we have SNAP benefits. Technically, yes.
But also technically, yes, SNAP benefits are all getting cut. Like, even it's, there's even more restrictions on it now. And, and all of these government programs, every single one of them, the threshold is so low. Uh, and you're like, exactly the example you gave, right? There is no way in hell someone making thirteen dollars an hour or ten dollars an hour before taxes can afford food, but they're, they're making way too much money, too much. They might be abusing the system. Oh, my God, if we give them a couple hundred bucks a month for food.
Right. And, and so then it comes into like, you see that this person who's just over whatever the, the requirements are for it can't, they're, they don't, they're not eligible for the SNAP benefits, let's say. And you know, you're not eligible for the SNAP benefits. But the difference is this person's making thirty-one thousand dollars a year. You're making ninety-six.
Right.
Comparable like, and so that's one of the things like, I told the same thing I, I said earlier, I said in the same article, there are people who are going to bed hungry tonight, every night, yesterday, you know, and days before. There are people going to bed outside tonight, every night. And then it just started coming out, I like, the, the article came out and then I would have meetings, like I worked at the college at the time. And so I would have, I got pulled into like this, it wasn't like an official or formal meeting, but it was like, hey, how does the city not help? You know, like, it was one of those things where it's like, you said something and it ruffled some feathers, blah, blah, blah. And then.
Yeah.
I had a, a friend, a close friend, and I guess a commissioner reached out to him, like a city commissioner, and they were like, hey, like, I, the cook guy, the cook guy with the dreads, what's up with him? And it's like.
Do you have dreads? I can't see it.
So I, so I have, I cut my locks, uh, but I'm getting them reattached because I had psoriasis my whole life. And so I needed to do like a deep scalp treatment and the locks, my birthday is in September. My birthday is, um, on early voting. And so.
Beautiful.
Yeah. Uh, so I'd like to have my locks back by then, uh, and have like a whole birthday bash at the polls and things of that sort. But, uh, yeah, it was like the cook guy with the dreads, like, he's, he's moving uncontrolled, like, he's just, he's mov- he's saying things unfiltered. And it's like, I have no PR training, first of all. So it's like, I can only say what I see and what I.
Right.
Like, and that's just, is what it is. Like, I hit dog hollers. There's no.
Yeah.
There's no reason that the city should take offense to somebody saying the city isn't helping its people. If the city can come back with, we're doing this, 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 this.
Right.
Help our people. I'll, you can uno reverse me and I'll be happy to be wrong.
It'll be like, hey, so sorry, my bad. I didn't know your game. Didn't know, like, truly.
But if you can't, I can't, I can only apologize about how that made you feel. I never, I'll never apologize for anything that I say if I feel like I truly meant it. And it's.
Yeah.
For someone who can't speak for himself. And I do think our council members have to be that kind of person as well. You have to say things that your, that your constituents can't say because they're not in a position to say, or they're not, the correct phrase isn't educated enough. But if they don't know how to word and phrase themselves to basically express their emotions on how they feel like they're being let down by the city, it's your job to bring that to your colleagues and to the city and say, hey, we're not doing enough for this neighborhood and this district here.
Yeah.
It's that. And if you're, if you're too focused on being filtered and not wanting to ruffle the feathers of your colleagues or of your commissioners and things of that sort. And that comes at the cost of the people living in your district suffering, you shouldn't be in this position. Like, it just shouldn't.
You literally shouldn't have this. This is, okay, so this is one of my favorite trends that I am seeing, especially with people in their twenties and thirties running in office is just the fact that like, none of us really care about the bullshit, right? Like, obviously you're interviewing right now in a T-shirt and a backwards hat. And I love that cuz it feels very authentic to you. But like, for so long, people are like, well, you have to wear a suit. You wanna be a city council member, you have to wear a suit. The fuck you do? Who cares? It's like, nobody wants to wear a suit every day. And if it doesn't fit you and it doesn't fit your personality, why would you do it? So I'm, I'm grateful to hear that cuz it's sitting on this like cut level of comfort and, um, policing everyone's tone and policing the way people dress and I mean, especially with locks, people are probably gonna say something about your hair. And it's like, does that affect my ability to do my job? Absolutely fucking not.
I, and, and I, I, I can't agree more. Um, I've compromised. Uh, so I don't wear, I don't wear my durag out as much as I, as much as I used to or as much as I'd like. I do understand, like, it's, it's a bigger perspective than the one that I have. I feel like what I'm wearing on my head shouldn't like be what you determine what it is a run is. But I do understand that there are people who that does play a major factor for. I just like wearing.
I mean, they look pretty sleek.
Yeah.
They look pretty sleek.
But then there's another component to like, uh, so my family, my, my family has always been on some like, our vote doesn't matter. And that's just what's always lived in those neighborhoods where it feels like they don't care about us. Like, they're not looking for us. Like, we're not gonna vote. But now that I'm running and they're becoming more and more aware of these things and like how big your municipal elections are, uh, my cousin, the day before yesterday, uh, he was, he's a professional photographer. And so we were kinda doing like a video for my campaign shoot and, uh, I did it in a durag and he was like, I think it's so funny that you're, uh, walking around like with the durag cuz it's like a cape. It's like a, it's like your cape, uh, for, for your camp.
Superhero.
But then I broke it down to him, like, for this half of the, of the community, for sure, like that, that I can see where it's like, whoa, it's so cool. Like, he's running for this and he's also dressing like this. But then for the other half, it's like, he's not taking this seriously at all. And so.
Yeah.
I'm happy. You have to. And that's just playing the game of politics. Like, you have to be able to be like, I wanna appeal to the older and younger demographics of the people that live around me and.
Gonna ask how you're gonna do that, right? Cuz there's nine districts. We've got two hundred and eight thousand people. So we're looking at what, uh, twenty divided by, that's like twenty-five thousand? No.
That, that's so, no.
How many people are in your district?
So we had two thousand five hundred people vote in the last.
Okay.
Which is such low numbers that it's really embarrassing. Uh, we need more. We need more voters. That's, that's, that's.
Totally.
So as of North Carolina, thirteen percent of people voted um, in the last election. And in thirteen is way too low. You split thirteen percent amongst nine, nine, nine.
It's nothing. Yeah, I was about to say, I looked, I just did the math, uh, with two hundred and eight thousand, you guys each have like twenty-three-ish thousand people? And of course, not all of them can vote, right?
Right, right. But the ones who can, don't. And we do have a lot of our, the majority of our voters are, are elders, you know, who are used to voting and have seen like what, what change and impacts voting can actually do. Whether you want change or don't want change, you know that it's important to either vote for things to stay the same or vote for things to be different. But the younger demographic or just the uninformed demographic, uh, they don't think it matters. And I do think that's something that I'm able to bring as well is I've been in a place where I didn't think it mattered. And it's like, I understand how important it matters now. And it's like, I do still feel like the work I do and the people I'm dealing with and the people that I see and engage with, I can talk to them and it doesn't feel like I'm an old head preaching at them, like, you need to get out and do your.
Right, right.
Blah, blah, like, voting now could be an act of rebellion if you want it to be. And if you're not happy with the status quo, the best thing that you can do to change the status quo is to vote. And so it's, it's, it's crazy how that's something that's so American to do. And if you
Yeah.
change, like, if you're like, I, I really dislike current America, you, you go and vote. And it's like.
Right.
Change is to actually do something super, super normalized that'll benefit you and hurt the people that wanna keep you where you are.
Well, and something that is, um, so frustrating to me is this idea that your vote doesn't matter while we're watching people specifically right now in Texas, but other parts of the country try to disenfranchise voters and make their vote count less. And I'm like, if they didn't, if they, if it wasn't important, they wouldn't be trying to take it away from you, you know?
My brain literally, it broke a little bit when I was trying to like re- not reason, uh, understand what they were talking about in Texas because I was thinking like, I understood the numbers that they were saying. They were saying there's this many of this race here and so it count. But then when it went back and said, so if you're this race, it's gonna count for this.
Yeah, one third or one fifth.
And I was like, is that not the?
It's the three fifths compromise.
Like, at one point in everything, like, this isn't okay.
Yeah, no, literally, it's exactly, it's the same. It's also what we do with prison populations, right?
Right.
We drop these big prisons into rich, rural, not rich, poor rural white areas and then none of them get to vote. But they get extra representation. So those, tho- those rural voters get like twice as much because these other people can't vote.
Yeah, and, and I just.
Crazy.
It's, it's, it's wicked and I don't understand the lack of outrage, but then when you come to think about it, like, it took me like a second or a few minutes to be like, we, this is literally that. And people don't understand that this is literally that, which is why I'm so glad about social media and
Yeah.
I'm trying to do more to like keep myself accountable with making my videos. Uh, but like, like.
You're running a nonprofit, you're running a campaign, you have a couple of things on your plate, just a few.
But it's important that, so a lot of my videos are, are simplified. So it's like, I don't wanna use jargon and I don't wanna use confusing words. So people will be like, you just said a lot that I don't know what you're talking about. So it's like, this was what the three fifths rule was.
Right.
For now.
Right.
It, it equals that. And then, but finding a way to say that and make sure like you understand, like, this is how serious this is without it, while still making them wanna watch the whole video is like, that's the juxtaposition, like, how to use.
It's tough.
Yeah. And so some of the videos, like the constitutional rights series that I'm doing currently. Younger people have been saying that they appreciate that it's so short. And, and that, cuz I try to keep it at three minutes, so I can.
Yeah.
On Instagram as well. Uh, but it's great that it's so short.
Instagram, fuck that place. Yeah, dude, I know, I'm aware. And I'm, I'm a yapper. I'm a long-winded person. So getting in with three minutes. And for a complicated topic, like sometimes this needs to be talked long, like, we need to speak more about this.
You have to. Uh, but then the older demographic as well have spoken to me and said that they appreciate that I'm even like telling people what their rights are, you know, because I don't know their rights. And so the, the second amendment video, I thought I was gonna get like so much just backlash.
Yeah.
People are just so on one side of the fence on it. And I, I got a little bit, like, somebody was like, uh, on YouTube, I posted on YouTube and they were like, you need to post the stats because it does feel like your opinion is going one way without you showing any stats that more guns in neighborhoods don't equal more safety. And I chose to ignore it.
You being a big person. I've been in an ongoing feud with a commenter on one of my videos now for like five days. So stupid.
I'm not gonna give you, like, you can also do the research, you know, at, at that, like, I'm not an expert.
Right.
I say, but.
Right.
Commented under his comment and listed a bunch of stats. And I was like, appreciate, I don't know this person. So it's like.
Bada bing, bada boom.
And so it was just the person that was like, I appreciate this video. Also, by the way, these are some stats on twenty twenty-three on blah, blah, blah. And I was just like, I didn't reply to that one either cuz I wanna be non-biased, you know, but it's like, whatever, I. Exactly. And the videos, I do think are super necessary and super important because there are people who don't even know, um, about these things. Uh, my, my uncle, he thought your first amendment right was freedom of speech and that's it.
That's all.
No, you get five rights in there, brother. You, you gotta know what you're.
It's a big one. That's a really big one that we love and are kind of ignoring right now, if I'm being completely honest. That you're, you're like, I think ten-ish years younger than I am. It, the way that we're teaching civics and the way that history is being taught throughout public schools in the United States has gotten like exponentially worse with our generation and even a little bit worse with the one behind us. So a lot of them are getting that type of information from.
Yeah.
Social media.
A lot of people feel like everything that they were told was a lie.
Well, it was. Unfortunately, it was, you know, um, that's, I, that's how I started my platform is relearning US history.
Exactly, yeah. So a lot of people just feel like, would like your curriculum can't teach me what life really is. And on top of, so whenever I was, uh, trying to like, I wanted to get some of these gardens, like, um, container gardens at some of our local middle school and high schools. And so with it, I'm here, I signed up to be a substitute teacher in Cumberland County. And so I'd be in.
A strong move, strong move. I like it.
Right. So just to infiltrate cuz it's like, all right, if I can't get your attention with an email, I'll just pull up for work.
I was about to say, have you been watching Abbott Elementary? Isn't the substitute, I think there is, one of the main characters starts as a substitute teacher and he starts the gardening club.
Oh, wow. Yeah, no, I've actually been there for like years to get into Abbott and, and I still.
Really good.
But I would go and, um, a lot of these kids, uh, when you're subbing, even the way they learn is like, you have to know how to speak to, to.
Completely different.
You have to know how to speak to teenagers because they're wildly like, even in the ten years since I've been in school, it's just like, some of the things that comes out of their mouth. And so being somebody that's like not too far removed from their age, I then in turn try to code switch and talk to them like they talk in order to be able to teach them something that it's like, you don't even realize you just learned something. That, you have to trick people into learning these days, actually is.
Yeah.
Skills. And it's like after a conversation that you may be like, oh, we're just having a good time. We're having a good chat. And you walk away like.
There's something in there. It's, as a gardener, this is the perfect metaphor. You've planted the seed.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. Talking about getting these things going, uh, some, some kids, what can you do? Like, I, I introduced myself once and a kid asked me if I ever wanted to be Swiss cheese and I didn't understand what that meant until another.
Old are the, the kids asking the Swiss cheese question?
Uh, fifteen, sixteen. It was, I think, eighth grade, eleventh grade. Uh, and so I didn't know what that meant. And then another she told me what it meant and I was like, oh, I'm calling seven hundred now. And so like.
What, seven hundred?
It was just the front office and they were like, he was just joking. And I was like, tell it to the judge. Uh, but, uh.
Wait, I'm sorry, is that gun euphemism? Swiss cheese?
We like put a bunch of holes in you, like Swiss cheese. Uh, but it was just.
We need the psychiatrist, we need the police, we need, we need to take this seriously.
It was from the introduction. How you guys doing today? Jake Juan, you can call me Juan. I'll be your sub today. And then it's Mr. Sir. They always go in, Mr. Sir, like, Mr. Sir, you ever wanted to be Swiss cheese? And it's like, what? What does that mean? And then, but going forward from there, it's like, there are a lot of those kids who, when they leave the school, they go and interact with people who are, who make that lifestyle normalized and it's normal for them. So even after that school day ended, in my head, I was like, had I played into, I guess, what he was saying, I could have established some kind of like, oh, this guy's chill, whatever.
Cred, yeah.
But also that's not okay. So like my first reaction probably didn't feel, my first reaction was the right reaction.
Right.
I'd look. But.
Yeah.
Afterwards, I was just like, now if I sub for that school again and if I have him as a student, he's not gonna wanna engage and he's not gonna wanna say anything.
Right.
And it was just like, ah, like I, I lost that kid, you know? So you have to kinda just like get, be, be at the level that they're at cuz they already don't wanna be at school. Number one. Number two, you're lucky that they're there when they see you're a sub. And number three.
Right, right. I never, if I had a sub, I was. Right, right. I never, if I had a sub, I was not shown up. As soon as, as soon as I, you know, on our little flippy phones, as soon as I got the text.
No, I mean, and that's just what it is, so. Relying on options outside of your actual school hours is huge. And a big part of one of my camp points as well, which is um violence prevention through youth programs. And every single city across every single state, no matter where you are, will be like. We have so many youth programs, there's so many things for the youth to get into, but it's like, are those programs sustainable? Do the kids wanna be there? And does it.
Are they accessible? Like where where are you sending them, right? Like, do they have to get on three buses? Cuz nobody's fucking doing that.
Exactly. And and if you're already experiencing like poverty. Violence exposure, you have family that are used to being incarcerated, things of that sort, like. You're already set up to fail, you know, like already in a in a process where it's like. You're twice as likely to be involved in the same outcome. And so if you had, if you don't have intervention and you don't have people to help keep accountable on the things that you do after you're outside of. Supervision from school, like. You go to school, then you go to the streets for a lot of kids out here. And so like, we need trauma-informed care, we need data-informed action and we need. Like holistic intervention. Like things that are super sustainable and are wrapped around support. So we need our mental counselors. North Carolina has one of the lowest numbers for uh licensed social workers. Because they're just, it's, they don't get paid here, like they don't make any income here.
I mean, North Carolina, the the teachers, the counselors, the the like anything in the school system. And we're talking about minimum wage earlier, not changing. I don't think they're, they've changed prices in like at least ten years. I mean. When I was a senior in high school, one of my teachers was making like thirty-one thousand dollars and she had her masters.
Right, yeah, so as a sub here, um I don't have a teaching degree, so I would make a hundred and thirteen dollars a day as a sub. But if you have a teaching degree, you make a hundred and thirty-six dollars a day. So it's like you make twenty bucks more than I make and you went to college, you have four years.
You spent time doing, you wanna do this, you literally like, you know, obviously you wanna do it too for different reasons, but like these are the people that are like.
This is a side hustle, you know, you pass. Like you could be the sub and it's like twenty bucks less than a person who went to school for four years to get their.
Insane. Yeah, that's crazy. Um. I I I like where we're going with this. Maybe we can continue talking about how you got your your gardens in some of these schools. And then we'll kind of start to wrap up.
Yeah, so it's. Get the gardens in the schools. Uh so. Yeah, I've spoken with a uh couple of people that work with Cumberland County Schools uh outside of a formal conversation. And essentially, I was told that it's really, really hard to receive a partnership with Cumberland County Schools because. They like to have a full um handle or a foothold on the things that are happening within the schools, which I think is. If I'm being unbiased, that's fair. They wanted a full control, like we we don't want anything that we don't have a uh complete knowledge on. What the going-ons are going on at these schools. That's very fair. However.
Yeah.
Some things are important enough, I feel like that it's necessary to do, like and number one, a garden isn't. Something that I think takes up. School time or a distraction from this, the 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 current happenings that are going on at. So just developing a garden, making a gardening club at a middle school or high school.
Exactly.
Participate in outside of that and then establishing that on school grounds could be huge. Um one of our schools.
It's like a massive life skill that so many adults that I know are like, I can't do it. And I'm like, you can, you just have to learn how to do it. It's not gonna be perfect. But if they learn how to do it in school, then they go home and do it and they. I don't know, they do it with their grandma, they do it with their mom, they do it with their their brothers. And it's like a whole thing. It's it's. Exponentially good.
It's 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 sad, honestly, that it's just like you have to fight so hard to be able to do something. And what what you think is good. Is subjective and that's the unfortunate part cuz I could think it's a great idea and in a school would be like, here are thirty reasons why we shouldn't do that. And it's like.
The only reason that's coming to mind is that like some kid might try to pot um. Some kid might try to grow pot. That's like the the one thing I can think of that is like a bad.
Yeah, but uh the option, like, we should still give the option, you know? That kid grew pot, like, okay.
So he gets in trouble.
Yeah, get him out of here. We should like, that's that's the Peter paying for Paul, like one. Situation shouldn't ruin it for an entire, you know, generation at this school. And my, one of my biggest things also is. Once those ideas get planted. It 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 does happen. So I spoke to, let's let's say I spoke to ten schools, right? I've spoken to every school in Cumberland County, but. They're like, oh, that's just not something that we can see being at this school right now. And then let's say a new principal comes in eight years and they're like, you know what we should do? We should put a garden outside the school. It's like, it's already gonna happen anyways in the future. Just getting a jumpstart on it now would be so beneficial. So if there's like an inkling of. Maybe this would be a good idea. Try it. If it doesn't work, you're at full liberty to say this isn't working out for us. Like, let's get rid of it, but.
For one season, you know, or like one full year, it's, to me, it just seems so. It just, it it doesn't even seem rational to say no to that. I think it's like.
We've spoken about budgets, like, okay, well, the school doesn't have the budget for something like this anymore, but. I'm working on an acre and everything's come out of my. You get all of my material, the ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent of the materials at my garden or at the garden that we're building were donated. And it's like, and I'm a, I'm I'm some guy, like if you can.
Right, you're not the principal of a school, you're not like, like, again, it's be, it's being donated because it's a good idea.
Right.
You know, like, it's because everyone, ninety-nine percent of people universally think that, like, community gardens and gardening in school is a good fucking idea.
Right. And you guys are, you have the ability to host drives, like. Let's do a gardening drive, let's get some soil here, some tools, whatever, they're gonna be like, who is this guy? But like, if it goes to the school that you're the principal, like, you can host these drives and they'll be more willing to be like, yeah, like. A gardening club's on the school, I wish I had a gardening club when I was in school, da 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 da, and so there'll be. And some people, we we can't, we have to stop pretending also that Fayetteville is such a broke city. Because there's money circuit, there's money here, people have money here. There are a lot of things that get donated to financially rather than with materials and resources. And sometimes are people who donate and do it silently, they don't even want the acknowledgement or anything like that, but like. A school, like a middle school, especially, we have historical middle schools and high schools here in Fayetteville. We have uh Anchestine and Lewis Chapel, which were segregated schools at one point. And it's like, they're both still across the street from one another, they're just integrated, obviously. But it's like, you have schools like that where it's like somebody's grandparent might have been at one of those schools cuz they weren't allowed at the other and now it's like. You're given options for after-school resources for the community. Absolutely, I wanna participate and 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 potentially donate into that or help fund that because. I remember the school essentially was able, was the reason why I was able to get an education or the school was the reason why my father was able to get an education. And we're just not even gonna ballpark it, like, some some people say soft launch, but it's, I try to hail Mary. Like everything, it's like, just see what sticks and what doesn't. If you're not even gonna try it, I like what.
This is another thing that I keep coming back to that's been driving me insane. You and me and almost every single person I've interviewed on this podcast, we were all told. We were told, you're you're in the United States. If you work hard and you you have a dream, you're gonna get it done, it's gonna get done. And now. For the last like twenty years or fifteen years of my life, the government, anytime someone's like, government, public schools. Even like public programs here in New York, anytime someone's like, hey, I have this idea, here are the numbers, this is what it would do, this is the net positive, this is what I can see are detractors, people are just like, no. And you're like, wait a minute, but I've been told my whole fucking life that if I, huh? But it's very much in the. In this like government sector of, and they're just like constantly saying no.
And here, a big thing that they say uh is that. It's your best bet to collaborate with other organizations or people looking to do the same thing as you. And I think collaborations are great, like I always stand. Collaborate with whoever because you're stronger in numbers. But if me, John and Sally. All have our own thing going and we decide to collaborate and we still only have seven dollars between us. Like, it doesn't do anything, like now it's, you just, you just made one group of of people lacking in funding your resources. Rather than three people asking you for the same thing, which I think that's fantastic. If if. We all band together, they can't say no because you're lacking this. Well, maybe. Okay, but they're lacking this. Well, I have that. Okay, you're lacking this, the third person has it. So I do think those collaborations really do help when you're asking for something. Because like, what real reason do you have to tell a uh, what's it called, a co-op? Other than, I don't like that idea and I'm not gonna bring it to the table, so me personally, one person. The idea that you guys are coming to this table with. And that's just not okay, but that dims the breaks, yeah?
Um, okay, so give me the rundown, where can people follow you? Where can people donate to uh your campaign? And and learn more about what you're doing?
For sure. So I am on. Instagram and TikTok at Finesse Chef Kwan. Um, I am on Facebook at J Kwan Fullmore for D seven. Uh, my website is actually going up this week. So I had a.
We'll put it in, when you get it, send it to me and I'll put it in all the notes and stuff.
I had an issue with Truist, they sent my debit card to the wrong address, so they had to ship it back and then change the address. And after you change it, it takes a week for their system to update. And so uh.
I'm laughing cuz I was like, oh, I feel like I knew this. And I did because you were, you were telling this story on on TikTok or Instagram, yeah.
And it's just like, all right, wow. So my campaign so far, we've been doing canvassing and uh. Things of that sort, just. With mouth because we don't have any materials yet because our account can't be used because the debit card isn't there. But it's fine. Uh, there's this park called Lake Rim um here in Fayetteville. Um. We're having a big District Seven deep dive at Lake Rim this evening where it's like a meet and greet where. We've been inviting a lot of members of our community to just come out, hang out, there's a picnic portion. Uh, and we'll just be talking, like, what are some things that you wanna know about that you think? I may not be able to do, or what are some things you're hoping that I do, things of that sort? Cuz my biggest question is always. What do you at twenty-seven think you can bring here more than? And I saw the interview that you did with the person from Durham and I believe. Than I am and.
He's younger than you and then the guy in Charlotte is younger than you and you're already doing work in the community.
Right.
You're not, this is not like, you, to me, you're you're the perfect type of candidate. I wanna see people who already care about the community, who already are doing work. And you're building these community gardens, you are working with the kids in the in the community as a substitute teacher, which I think is actually doing community work, if we're being honest, you're building the community. Yeah, yeah, I'm very impressed with you. I'm super excited to see where you go and I think people are excited to see young people. Who care and try. Um, the last thing we have to do is a couple get-to-know-you questions. All right, are you a cat or a dog person?
I've always had dogs, uh but as an adult, I do feel like my personality would mesh a lot better with a cat. Cuz I do, I just be chilling and sometimes like when, if if I'm in a phase in life where I have a dog or my family home has dogs, like we have, my mom loves. Uh, and it's just like, relax, sometimes.
How many does she have?
And I think a cat would definitely, I could just live in a house with a cat and it'd be like a roommate rather than.
If you get the chill ones, yeah, but like, watch out for the orange ones, the orange cats, they are. Horriest, but they don't have a brain. So they're just like, bing bing, bing bing bing. Um, okay, are you? Do you drink coffee, tea, or another caffeinated beverage of choice?
Big coffee guy, big coffee guy. Uh, I love. Hot, cold, whatever. Uh, there's this place when I lived in Cali uh in San Francisco that did iced coffee flights. And me and my coworkers would just tear it up. Like, I love a cup of coffee, it's, I'm not me without a cup of coffee. One of those people.
Same, coffee was my, the background on my phone for like five years, like like a very fancy photo of coffee beans and my friend did it with like this beautiful blood orange. And I was like. That's what I wanna see every day. I wanna see that every day. Uh, what was the last book that you read, cover to cover?
Honestly.
Or listen to or say, I mean, you know.
The Odyssey. Favorite story of all time and I I read it maybe twice a year, like I love.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, am I thinking about the 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 like Greek?
Yeah, well, Odysseus and his journey, uh Ithaca from his war.
How long of a book is that?
It's very long.
That's why I was like, twice a year.
And the audio itself is like, I think it's four hours and thirty minutes. Uh, but I only read it again this year because. Epic the Musical, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but some guy made a musical of the Odyssey because it was a part of his. Like a a college project. And so he went on TikTok and he wrote all the songs. And he had random people on TikTok sing the songs and that's how he hired the cast. By who was able to perform the songs the best. And so then they turned it into a four-part saga over. Like the last six or seven years. And so people will wait for the sagas to drop on Spotify and. Now like they're actually turning it into a legitimate musical. And so I listened to it on Spotify and I. Seen the, somebody did fan animation for every scene and every song.
Oh, my god.
And so he did a compilation of different people's fanimation. And so every song is like a different. Art style of Odysseus or whatever, because it's just random people who wanted to actually make the scene come to life. And so I was, ah, I gotta read the Odyssey again, man, so.
For the people listening, you can't see this, but my mouth has been open, my jaw has been on the floor for the last like, I don't know, minute. This, that's crazy. That's awesome.
Yeah, he definitely like, he turned a college project into something that's probably gonna fund the rest of his life.
I mean, I love that. And then I'm thinking about this fanimation on Tik, I mean, the. The internet is filled with such talented people. Sometimes I'm just like, oh, I'm so lucky that I've run across your page, you. Talented monster, like just so, it's so much beauty all the time, I love it.
Yeah, and I I'm really into uh the. I'm a cinephile for sure, so I'm really into.
Okay, so that's my next question, favorite movie of all time. And you have to pick one, you have to pick one, that's tough.
If I had to pick one that was just like, this is such a great put-together story. I'm gonna go with. Ah, but it's a tie.
Fine, I will give you two, you may have two.
All right, cool. Uh, so the first one is gonna be Mister Nobody. Uh, with Jared Leto.
Okay.
Um, it's about a dystopian world where people don't die from old age anymore. And everybody stays young, but Mister Nobody is this really old man, he's gonna be the last human to die of natural causes. And there's a reporter doing an interview for. This la- this this last person to die and it's Jared Leto. Uh, and so he's trying to recount his life, basically, the reporter wants to know what was it like living? In a world where people died. And uh, when he was a child, his parents divorced and they were at a train station. And he's trying to remember if he went with his mom or with his dad and lived that way. And so the story is broken up into three different realities where one aspect of his life is told by the story of him going home with his mom. The other story is him getting on a train with his dad. And then the third story is him just running away from the train station and he lives like a full life through each of these different realities. But he just can't remember which one was the real reality. And so uh, they asked him his name, he doesn't remember his name, so it goes by Mister Nobody until the end where he actually remembers who he is. Uh, great movie.
Sounds so sad.
Yeah, it is. But I love indie movies like that, like those movies are. Because he's a, it's Jared Leto, but uh.
Yeah.
I I, it it is like a a fairly sad movie cuz obviously he's the last human to die, so we know how the movie ends.
Yeah, 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 and you're like, well.
Yeah.
We're slowly crawling towards death. Who isn't?
And then the second movie that's tied for first with me is The Incredibles. The first Incredibles, I think Syndrome is the greatest villain to ever live, like, I would even call him an anti-villain. Because it's like. He's, I mean, you know a syndrome, you know, he's just. Met his idols that got hurt by his idols and he, he did something about it. He's, it's, obviously was a super genius. He ended up manufacturing and creating weapons. And he wanted to give it to countries that felt like they couldn't defend themselves. And then his end goal is, if everyone's super, no one is. And it's like, he's coming from a hurt place, man, like, and, and obviously he's.
I, I, I love The Incredibles and part of it is for Syndrome specifically, but I did wait fifteen years to learn out what Jack Jack's. Jack Jackson's superpowers.
I think Jack Jack was a cop out, I'm not gonna lie to you. Uh, we gave him all those powers. I, and I, I get it. Like, a lot of people were like, oh, like, when he's a super, he's gonna be the jack of all trades. And it's like.
I didn't even, I didn't even clock that. I figured he'd grow up and he would, like, some of them would fall apart. Like, I figured just being in your, like, terrible twos. Maybe you have more power than, than you, you will have as like a fifteen year old. Maybe it'll just kinda like, as you grow up, it goes away. That was my thought. I was like, mm.
I've been seeing, I've been seeing stuff, just talking about, like, so this is, again, I, I keep, I'm, like you said, I stumble across people's pages all the time too. And there's a guy who does, uh. He does art and he creates like, he, he's made this whole story to where, uh, what if. Syndrome was successful in kidnapping Jack Jack, right? And it's like.
Oh, my gosh, that'd be a nightmare, a nightmare.
And so the family, like slowly, like, the two parents, they slowly kinda go crazy trying to think about. Where Jack Jack is and they spend their lives trying to find him, blah, blah, blah. And then, uh. Dash and Violet grow up to be supers, like superhero adults as well. And then eventually. They run into Jack Jack and he goes by the Jack of all trades and he's a bad guy and it's like the family.
He was raised by Syndrome.
Of whatever that universe is. And it's like, you were the baby last time they saw you and now you're just this evil, heinous villain. And I love a good story like that, that Disney would never do, but I get.
I know. Okay. Final question before we wrap up. What is your favorite thing about Fayetteville or your district specifically?
It's a city with so much potential. This city is a melting pot of culture. We have Fort Bragg, of course. So we have people that come in from everywhere. So it's also a little weird when we hear people talk about. An immigrant problem here, because it's like. Yeah, um, it's one of those things where there's so much people bring into the city from being from somewhere else. That is just like, you can't, you can say a lot of things about Fayetteville, but you can never call it boring. Because there's so much life culture and. If we invest in the people and actually allow some of these people to do things other than worry about how they're gonna pay rent next month. I do think Fayetteville could be seen as a, as great of a city as Raleigh or Charlotte or things of that sort. Because the people are here and they wanna be here and it's just a great place to be all around. It could be a really good, uh, good place to be all around.
That's it. I wanna thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it. And we'll put all of your socia's and all the places that you, uh. You, you, people of Fayetteville can follow you and people of North Carolina and out beyond can donate money or even jump in for like a phone banking or something like that as well.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Amazing. If you've made it this far, thank you so much. Thank you for following The Foolish Optimist. You can follow us on Spotify, Apple, YouTube, wherever you get your podcasts, pretty much. We're gonna be dropping new episodes every Wednesday and you can watch the video episodes on YouTube. If you would like to, please give us a review, leave comments. You can also email us at thefoolishoptimistpodcast@gmail.com. If you see any really great candidates that I should be talking to, send them my way. Thank you.